Welcome, everybody. I really appreciate your coming out tonight because I think we're talking about things that are so on the ground sustainability, what really makes a difference a lot of times is local and county, city, sometimes state politics. So first up, by the way, my name is Michelle Rogers and I'm with the Center of Excellence for Field Biology. I absolutely want to thank my group, the Center of Excellence for Field Biology, but also the Department of Biology and the Colleges of Science, Technology, Engineering and Math, Maddox and Karen Reynolds, our dean, who helped make all of this possible. Really like made it possible, right? We've never gotten this stuff for the film. This will be available as a live stream, but also as a recording later. And I think, yeah, would have been able to do that. On one of the table outside of the registration pages, there is a QR code on one of those documents if you want to share the link with somebody later. I'd like to thank all of you very much for coming. And Joanne MacIntosh, a local Sierra Club, working hard to get great questions together and moderating the discussion. And I'll get on the line and get started off together.
Okay. So we're in the same, thanks everyone for being here. And the audience, thanks for all the candidates who are here today. Thanks to all the purpose sponsors, who are sponsoring this, so we really feel the heaven for the things we understand this, and this time for the the electric timing of the moment. So we appreciate you making time to come out here today. Um, I did want to mention that we have seven candidates running for city council here. And we do invite all sixteen candidates and we appreciate those that were able to make time to train us today. So I would also like to start off with just candidates introducing themselves and what war leaders that you are.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here today. Thank you for inviting us and hearing our plane to Clarksville. Uh, my name is Amber Markey and I am currently the city councilperson for Ward Five.
Thanks, everybody. My name's Josh. I'm a junior here at Austin P. Uh, I'm a candidate for Ward Three.
And I'm Dwight Johnson. I'm a candidate for Ward Eight.
My name is Dr. Bridget Childs. I am a candidate for Ward Nine.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kamonte Epps and I'm also a candidate for Ward Nine.
Hello, everyone. I'm Zoe Jackson and I'm a candidate for Ward Twelve.
I'm David Villan and I am a candidate for Ward Four Twelve as well.
Well, everything. And I want everyone to know also that we can share the questions that we're going to ask them today. When candidates, it's going to some advanced notice that our discussion is sustainability topics. You talk about microphone, Kelly? I'm sorry, listen. These are sustainability topics and sustainability is sort of a word that people have various definitions for. So I want to get started by just defining what sustainability is. Sustainability can be defined as meeting the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. It encompasses and balances social, economic, and environmental factors for the benefit of the entire community. No single factor can overshadow the other two without becoming a level to all three of us to the community. A little background in Clarksville, in 2017, Clarksville Montgomery County prepared a sustainability report. Very few people are aware of it. In 2021, the city of Clarksville created the Sustainability Board. Like, few people who are aware of it. In 2023, a survey assessing the sustainability of the five hundred largest U.S. cities rated Clarksville 491st. A very low position considering our rapid growth. So we have decided on these four questions that address the need for improvement in sustainability. By what measures this improvement can be achieved and how your elected position will enable you to implement a course of action? Candidates, we each have two minutes to speak to each question. And just so you know.
And excuse me, I'm going to interrupt you just once. The people who are watching the live stream are still having trouble hearing. Does that microphone help the situation? I mean, it does in the room. How about the live stream?
All right. How is it now? Except for remembering to get close enough to my face. Okay. So we only have two minutes to speak and we will rotate the order of the candidates on each question. So the first question, Mr. Whitlam, Josh, will answer this one first. It is that 2023 survey by Yale University showed that sixty-five percent of Montgomery County residents believe that global warming is happening. And fifty-two percent think local officials should do more to address results that are higher than those of statewide responses, but lower than those nationally. Clarksville is the fifth largest city in Tennessee, but the only one of the top five without a sustainability director or department or a climate action plan, which is a resolution or goals to reduce greenhouse gases. So we are the only one of the top five largest cities that don't have those in place. The question is, would you advocate and sponsor a resolution for creating a sustainability position and developing a climate action plan in Clarksville, Montgomery County?
So I don't know too much about the numbers that you just mentioned, but I do know that ninety-seven percent of scientists agree that climate change is real. So I would advocate for the current, who, uh, people who are on the sustainability board now for the city, one of them to be, uh, in the position that you just mentioned, and I would advocate for that. And then I would advocate for a plan because we need to better steward the environment. Um, I would advocate for a plan to reduce the greenhouse gases. And our carbon levels have been rising since like the nineteen sixties, and I think it was just last year is the only year that it's gone down. So I guess.
Okay. And turn the question to Amber.
All right. So for me, I would actually want to see the sustainability board restructured. Um, there's been a lot that has not been able to be accomplished or that is that currently, there's a lot of vacancies. Um, frankly, I didn't even know that we had so many, especially the city council. Uh, we don't have enough people on that board. So I would like to see that re-done so that they're more efficient and effective before I would came for director, just because a director is going to cost taxpayer money and I would like to make sure that the reporting that is done before asking the taxpayers to, I don't know, add to that budget. Um, as far as a plan, I, I would like to also see our, uh, how we done, uh, kind of upgraded to a more modern, uh, facility, for example. Um, for example, our recycled materials, it takes a, a heavier facility to, to do, uh, for, um, sorry. The type of facility we need is an industrial composting facility. And we don't have that. The closest one is within two hundred miles of here. So I would like to see our facility upgraded to that, so that way our site materials can actually compost down into here. And that's something I would like to advocate for as well.
Great, thank you. And next, Mr. Jameson?
I would vote yes. Uh, piggyback on what she said, recycling is really expensive. Uh, it's for people who have money to recycle. I would love for us to adventure in, um, something that's affordable to the families and the communities for recycling, for it to be affordable. In some cities, they have it for free. But I would really vote yes for it, but I think we do do a better job and vote people that need the position they really care about and seeing out the value of what it means to our climate.
And, and Charles?
Yes, so I don't necessarily, we're not against each other, I know this is nonpartisan, but I think that a sustainability director is imperative because you have people on the board that are not equipped to think about or know about the, um, climate change. We are, we need a climate reduction grant some way. And we do, recycling is not just for the wealthy. How about we get a plan where what we can do is if you do recycle, then you get a portion of that off of your, your bill every month. Because we recycle, we send it down to the, to the center and then the city or whomever gets the reward for it. Why not reward the people for recycling? Larger cities do that. Have a certain color trash bag or a certain color container out in front of your home where each one of those containers represents cans, plastic or glass. And then we turn it in, you give the money for it, you get a portion of it, and then an additional reward to whatever the station is or the city, whoever would get that money. But I just, I don't think that recycling is merely for, well, we need to stop putting these centers in places where it's low income. Put them in other places too, because now that low income are overran by rodents and everything else, because we want to move everything in places where, um, brown people are instead of putting them in all of the areas if we're going to do that. We're not making any money off this. We're sending them over to other Asian countries.
So yes, I also agree that we do need to, um, advocate for a sustainability department and director. Um, we don't have these programs that can help with the gas emissions that come out from Clarksville. We don't have recycling, we do not have composting. And thanks to the sustainability board, we do have these numbers and this research to know what our city needs and how we can make a change. So having a director, although unfortunately it may come out of taxpayer, um, dollars, is bringing something back to this community. So as my opponent said, giving back to the people with recycling programs or giving back when you go recycle and you get a nickel for each can that you bring in is a way to give back to the city as well. So we need to bring more sustainable practices, uh, better public transportation to reduce gas emissions, more sustainable energy, as in solar or wind, to help bring these numbers down. Thanks to, um, the sustainability board, we can, we can work towards that goal as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Bylan?
About twenty-five hundred years ago, go back a bit, there was a Greek storyteller named Thessalon, and he wrote a fable about a pan and a grasshopper. The moral of the story deals with preparation versus just living for now. Our summers are hotter and drier, seasons are shifting, throwing off our agricultural cycles and the life cycles of the birds and insects. Meanwhile, uh, we watch and suffer. Clarksville has been the grasshopper while other big cities in Tennessee have been the gator. They've developed a plan and they hired full-time people to carry that plan now. Now, unlike the fable, Clarksville is not, uh, waiting for winter and we don't need to wait until the weather causes us to go begging for emergency funds due to long-term impacts of climate change. And unlike the end of the story, uh, the other largest communities in Tennessee have plans and they'll share the wealth of knowledge without us having to beg. So the beauty of this is the knowledge that's custom created, is part of hearing. Everything is pretty much on the same, um, line. Uh, so eighty to ninety percent of the, the plans that are already out there could be copied and pasted for our community. In school, uh, we all punished, if you copy them, you got a versus paper. In this situation, uh, it's smart for us to do it and we can save money. Uh, having a sustainability director is not a bad, even for those who dispute climate change, it's hard to argue with the saving point. And if we are smart about what we do, uh, house and take care of our traffic and how we save energy, um, then it's both good for both the city and the county, uh, and all of our citizens. And as technology advances, we need a dedicated expert to weigh in on the risks and the benefits of keeping current technology versus the ways innovations. In the long run, having an expert will pay for itself.
Thanks, Mr. Buck.
To sum it up, uh, I'm strongly an advocate and a sponsor for the position, yeah, of development.
And Ms. Jackson?
Hello, everyone. Again, my name is Zoe Jackson and I'm running for, um, Ward Twelve. Um, the question is, would we support or advocate? Um, and yes, I would support with more knowledge of how we are utilizing those resources now. Um, am I the advocate of, um, getting a director in there in position right now without understanding, um, where we're failing at, then I would say no, but that would come with me actually being in the seat once I'm elected to better understanding or having a better understanding of what it is that we need and how it is that we can help or, um, sustain the needs for, that would include everyone. Um, Clarksville, Tennessee is not only the largest city, but we are also the youngest city. And according to polls, sixty-five percent of the residents acknowledge that global warming and over half of the residents, of those residents feel that we should be doing something. I do not feel that we should just be doing it because they asked without education. And I feel that the proper education and resources are needed to be in place before we continue to just waste money.
Thank you. All right. The second question. And I really appreciate hearing your different ideas. I understand there's a lot of concern that's solid waste management, Clarksville, and around the state. Appreciate the discussion there. The next question is that low-income residents across the country suffer disproportionately from environmental pollution and energy burdens. How will you address these issues to develop programs, including federal grants, for healthy, energy-efficient, affordable housing? Would you support updating and better enforcement of codes as well as more public accountability? And this question goes to Mr. Jameson first.
I would say yes. I would address the issue by pushing weatherization assistance programs and getting more information out, better information for us to understand of what's going on in our communities for we can better understand and we can help, uh, figure out what was the need. Also, I'd like the funds specifically used for energy efficiency improvement and affordable housing, new construction incentive, provide grants and tax credits to developers for new affordable housing to make sure everybody's on the same board as far as how we allocate the funds. Also, I'd like to establish grants for landlords to make it more efficient for them to be able to upgrade their, um, rental properties for low-income neighborhoods.
Thank you.
So with regards to the grants, uh, what I have found in looking at quite a lot, especially after tornado, I was looking at immigrant um, and looking at housing grants, but were really lately, the way that a lot of these grants are structured make it that people who do need the grants are unable to obtain affordability. For example, when it comes to immigrant for a storm shelter, um, you pretty much have to pay the cost of that shelter and then they'll reimburse you. Those shelters cost anywhere between four thousand and eight thousand dollars. So who has that money in front to pay, you know? Um, but again, they do reimburse you, you just have to pay the upfront cost. There is a problem the city has about, uh, helping first-time homeowners. And they do give you a lot of money, but again, the requirements make it that it is unattainable because they require that you have three months of your mortgage in your account. You have to pay a thousand dollars as well. And again, people don't have that kind of money sitting there or if they're looking for money to help them out. So it's, it's difficult to rely on the grants as far as, uh, energy-efficient homes. Um, there is a way to build them, to make them affordable. What I have found is that there's resistance from the community because they don't like those types of homes. So I think that it comes down to a lot of education, uh, to tell them, hey, this is why these homes are being built this way. It makes them more fuel-efficient, uh, and energy-efficient, which will save you money in utilities to, on the long run, help you weatherize your home, and it just comes down to education all of the time.
Next, Mr. Us.
So I do feel that this issue is a multi-passage. Uh, we need to start figuring out a way to retrofit the homes that we have here in Clarksville that go unoccupied. There is abandoned buildings and homes where we can transform those into energy-efficient, uh, complexes for those who are looking for affordable, high-end housing. Um, I don't agree that because they don't like the affordable housing, I mean, the energy-efficient housing, that we should just avoid them. Um, I do feel that if you are looking for affordable housing, it's not really opinion-based. Uh, you're, you're in these homes to get on your feet and work towards financial stability. So their opinion on liking and not liking should not be a weighing factor on if we decide to bring those to, uh, Clarksville. Uh, I do also feel that we, we need to implement a stricter and updated version of the building and regulation codes so that these developers cannot sit around and make homes quickly and have to do them where there are unsafe conditions for families to live in. There are a lot of homes that are being built on sinkholes and rivers and they're flooding and they're falling apart because these, these developers are finding loopholes at the codes to get these houses up quickly. And that's not, that's not how we should be doing our citizens. Our citizens need to be in a safe home where they can raise their families and they can go to safe schools without worrying if they can pay their utilities. So energy efficiency is extremely important here. Uh, we also do need to enhance our public accountability. We need to extend public policy to these, uh, developers and these people that are coming and buying our homes here in Clarksville and then price gouging. So I, I completely agree that we need to work on those.
So yes, 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 you know, more code, you know, better codes, better accountability. So Clarksville, we are the seventh most populated, not only are we the seventh most populated, we are the seventh richest city, not state, city. Right here, Clarksville, seven richest and seventh most populated, right here in Clarksville, Tennessee. And why don't we have, why don't we have climate control, climate reduction grants already? Why are we, why are we, why wouldn't we put homes with, uh, solar panels? There's one of our city council members right now, and when he was running, he did put out of his own pocket, he put solar panels on the bus stop, on one bus, one bus stop. Because there was no hovering. Why can't we use solar? And we have these cars that run off of battery and gas. Why couldn't we make a home to do the same thing? Why can't we take some of this blighted property and use that blighted property and put people in those, in those places? And I believe that, yes, they do. They have to live here. They have to live in that place. So why wouldn't they have a choice? They can either choose not to live in it and continue to live how they're living or they take this, they take this property. And why can't we double tap? Why can't we have an energy-efficient period? It's just, um, we have so many properties, so much property around here, like, you know, Kamonte said, we have people coming in from other states, buying up the property, putting whatever they want on the property, increasing the price so that no one can afford to live in there. That black box across the street allows all of these, you know, anybody to, to be able to live there. The students can't afford it. The students come here with full ride scholarships. They can't even afford to live because they gotta live in their car and eat whatever, go to Lowe's and fish and eat because these places aren't efficient for them. That's, that's all I have.
Charles, Ms. Jackson?
Accountability. My biggest issue is with the lack of accountability in reference to how we utilize the funds that we already have. We have both states and federal funds, grants, that help support low-income housing with efficiency concerning windows and installation and some, um, um, mold in, in the homes. But there's no accountability. There's no one in place that is holding the builders and the landlords accountable for their actions and how they're contributing to what's happening to the homes. There's no accountability to the home, um, the builders, um, in reference to how they build homes. Uh, we're trying to put them up at such a rate and me in the process of buying a home now, um, I told my realtor, I don't want a new home. They going up so fast, I'd be scared to live and have my grandchildren, um, to feel safe in a new home. There, I went down the street in my home, my area itself, me and my son counted from ground zero till day fifteen. That house was up, stuck old, blocked off, roof, the whole nine. Out there's nowhere in the world that someone actually came out and inspected that house to standard. So I feel it's accountability that's needed and we need to trust the people that we're holding accountable to build these homes and these landlords for low-income housing.
Thank you. Mr. Bylan?
It's Villan.
Villan, sorry.
That's all right. Um, I'm going to switch around a little bit. It's not the Jackson, the, um, comment that, uh, goes to the end of what I did. I don't have sufficient time to get into updating and imposing enforcement of codes, but as a Ward Twelve Councilman when I'm elected, I will seek public accountability, see whether or not our student plan is realistic. If it is, I'm going to ask why are cities doing so poorly, uh, with our residents who need the most help? Uh, the city's consolidated annual performance evaluation event called CAPE, um, looked at roughly two thousand twenty-three. And we had a couple of grants, a block grant from, uh, the Development Block Grant, which is a C, uh, D, D, and a Home Investment Partnership. In, uh, twenty twenty-three, we received one million, thirty-two hundred, two, thirty-two thousand and change. But we spent less than a third of it. Two thousand twenty-three, we received six thousand, six hundred and one thousand in a home grant. We spent just a little over one hundred thousand. This year, the, uh, the draft has come out, so we don't have all the numbers, but according to the caterer, we have, uh, supposed to, according to the plan, expand and preserve affordable housing. Our goal, who knows what it is, but it's zero percent net, nothing, zero. Revitalize targeted neighborhoods. They say that we've gotten thirty-five percent of what we targeted. Why are we having goals that we can't meet? Why are we getting one that we're not using? Um, our plan knows, shows no goal and we've done nothing to provide homes for special needs families. Now, I've got a special need, a disabled daughter in Oregon. My, my wife is currently there trying to find special home for her because she's, uh, losing some capability. And it's hard and the Medicaid help in Oregon is much better than it is here in Tennessee. So I'm deeply disturbed that our city writes things down, says this is our goal, and then we don't even cover that fifty percent. So when I'm in the city council, I'm there for, because the other part of this is that energy efficiency takes second place when somebody is living in a tent across from the curbers at Lowe's Drive. We've got two hundred and two people without homes. There's over thirteen hundred kids that don't have a home. They get special services, but they don't have a place to put their head down and impact their closer. That's wrong. It's wrong.
And finally, Mr. Bealton?
Thank you. Um, so all right. So I do think that, um, there needs to be better accountability. I live in Ward Three and part of Ward Three is Britten Springs and that's where, uh, the tornado hit. And to this day, there are still houses that are torn up and you can see the blatant coat failures. They're still exposed. And to this day, there are still houses that are torn up and you can see the blatant code failures. They're still exposed. Uh, so we need to, it it's not just that the code needs to be rewritten or something like that. They just need to enforce the code. In general, you can see from where the tornado hit that the code wasn't enforced properly. So, um, that's just the beginning. You start there. And I do think that um. Energy efficiency is important and something we should look into, but um. I think just one step at a time, you know, start with uh, you know, looking uh, looking at the code. Uh, actually enforcing it and, you know, put where we can improve it and where, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day. So instead of trying to fix everything all at once, one step at a time. Thank you.
And we'll move on to our next question. Clarksville's rapid population growth has impacted quality of life for residents. Traffic congestion, loss of tree canopy, et cetera. Does the county's new twenty-year comprehensive plan sufficiently address these issues? What additional measures would you advocate to support sustainability in transportation? And transit and green spaces and so on. And Dr. Childs?
So I am not completely, even after reading it, I'm not completely. Sure that the twenty-year comprehensive plan is going to work or not, but I will tell you this, no. We need no more economic development. That's what we need to put a pause on. No more economic development. We have no green space left here. We have, actually, I have to drive, if you even want to see a starry sky. You have to drive to Kentucky or you have to drive to Arizona. Why don't we have, you know, we we have to drive some places because there's no more, you know, there's no tree canopy, but there's also light pollution. So when we take down the trees, we put up these law, these large lights that the lights are as bright as this on the street because we need to see everything. So those are one of, those are the two things that we need to stop. We need to have no more economic development. The animals don't even know where to go anymore. You know, and I'm not gonna sit up here and act like a a tree hugger because, you know, yes, humans are, you know. Important because we have our, we're on the street right now, living on the street. But we also have animals that don't even know where to go anymore because there's no, there's no land anymore. We're given all of our land. We're letting developers just come in and build and build and build. So we don't have any space for another landfill right now. We don't have any more space for that. Where would, where would we put it? I would pose that question. Where would we put it? So we don't, we're we're building, you know, the roads are getting, well, I haven't seen Clarksville in twenty years. Where Needmore used to be a dirt, a dirt road, tiny town used to be just two lanes. It is unbelievable, but we still can't get sidewalks. I'm confused over that.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
As I have overlooked the plan, I personally do not feel that the plan is addressing all of the issues. It is addressing future issues for Clarksville, but I don't think that we are addressing some that we have currently. We do need to revamp our public transit system. Um, our bus routes need to go into more integral parts of the city. And in that, in that sense, it would alleviate the need for personal vehicles for some. Uh, there's some people that live out in Clarksville who don't want to drive, but they feel they, that they need to drive because we have no bike lanes. I I see people riding their bikes every day and it is obviously something that is enjoyed here. But when you're risking your life just to get to work because you don't have a personal vehicle or your bus doesn't run near your neighborhood. That is a problem. Uh, I do feel that we need to focus on the traffic congestion. And try to alleviate some of those issues here. We also need to implement some equal eco-friendly community commuting options as well. So with those bike lanes, it it makes it safer for others to get to school, to get to work, to get home. Or to go to integral places that they need to go, like the grocery store. Sorry. And the tree canopy is a big issue, uh, like Dr. Child said here. We're having a lot of light pollution. We're having a lot of. Developments thrown in where we can't even see the sky anymore. But outside of that, what about noise insulation? I live near the Speedway and prior to them tearing down all of the trees around there and throwing up more townhomes. You could not hear those cars. I used to live in the neighborhood right next to the Speedway and I would rarely hear what's going on over there. But now that I live up Needmore, it's almost like they're at my window because there are no tree canopies to stop this noise from happening. And that is causing issues for all residents that's surrounding Clarksville because no matter where you are in Clarksville, you're going to hear the Speedway. So we do need to stop the development and try to preserve our land so animals have somewhere to go. So the noise insulation is contained and so we can have a clear sky at night when we want to go outside and. Look at the stars with our children. So I do think that that is a big issue here as well. Thank you.
The uh, not granted plan, a lot of pretty pictures. And if they all come together, that jigsaw puzzle is gonna make a real, real pretty town. But the plan shows that Ward twelve is the fastest growing uh section of our our county. And uh, it's between two thousand and ten and uh last year. Uh, there is no plan in that plan for the ward to have any green space. No parks, no walking trails, no greenhouse, nothing. Recovering our lands with condos, apartments, parking lots. And we create runoff that's gonna go down into Spring Creek and then into the river and then down into the recovering rivers. This is our drinking water, folks, and the drinking water of our neighbors downstream. The comprehensive plan says that the area of apartments north of Tyler Town has more than two thousand five hundred folk homes per square mile. Figuring about two cars per home, uh, we're adding uh more than about ten thousand tons of pollution a year. Now. A tree, one tree will consume about twenty-two pounds of uh CO2 a year. In order to get rid of those ten thousand pounds, ten thousand metric tons, I'm sorry, ten thousand metric tons of greenhouse gases, we have to plant a million trees. Now, we can re- reduce some of that uh pollution with increased mantra, mass transit. The plan doesn't show any increased man transit in Ward twelve. Tyler Town goes east to west, exit one, exit four. If you wanna go from exit one to exit four, you gotta go downtown and come back up. And that's more than an hour trail. People don't do that. We need to change what we're doing, to change what people do in their life. If we're gonna reduce some of the pollution, we are gonna have to spend some money. And we gotta look at it with common sense.
And Ms. Jackson?
So I also live in Ward twelve and I feel that the biggest issue. In reference to the comprehensive plan, it does not include Ward twelve. I'm looking to buy a home in Ward twelve. We have no um safe walkways. We have no space where people can properly ride safely a bike to and from. Um, and Ward twelve is so congested from Chick-fil-A, Wilma Rudolph, going towards the mall, going downtown. Wherever you are on Wilma Rudolph, it will take you anywhere from twenty to thirty minutes to get anywhere. And um, we haven't considered, we came up with a plan, yes, they came up with a plan, they do have it. But it doesn't include everyone. So we have to find a balance between the safety, between green space, between um. Bike riding and limiting the amount of cars that are on the street. But we also have to really be um consider all of the people that's moving in our city and how do we accommodate them? So we have to find a balance um and how we can address those, but right now, let's utilize the money that we have. To make it safer for our communities, to make it safer for everyone as we are learning. As we are um looking for resources and ways to better help um our community, not just Ward twelve, but um all of Clarksville. So that, if elected, that's what I will be trying to do. How can we utilize what we already have? In order to um meet halfway on the green space and the safety. And the playgrounds for our grandchildren, which I have five, and I don't know where to take them. But safely, but that's what I would do once I'm elected.
A key part of my campaign uh prior to coming in today was uh I wanted to overhaul the CTS system. Because the rate at which Clarksville is growing, um, and also because I'm disabled. Uh, I only recently was able to drive again after nine years. Um, and I would, in the nine years that I couldn't drive, refused to use Clarksville's transit system. Because I didn't think I could get anywhere on time. And it's because there just wasn't enough buses. Um, and uh, that's, I mean, if there's not enough buses, then probably putting out too much pollution anyway, you know? Um, so anyway, I wanna overhaul the CTS system, add more buses and uh. Consider something like a trolley system as well. This would A, help people who can't drive and B, that would help with the levels of pollution here in Clarksville. Um, in Ward three where I live, we have a uh area that was all trees that was destroyed by the tornado. I'd like to preserve that area too, but we'll see what happens. Thank you.
And Ms. Markie?
Thank you. Um, as far as the comprehensive plan, that plan actually was about two years in the making, maybe a little more. And it involved a council coming into City Clarksville and talking to the residents multiple times throughout those years. Uh, talking to like the officials separately, together, everybody. And uh, I attended quite a few of those meetings and up until the draft. Where they presented us what they found and asked for final input. The plan that we have currently, I wish I had brought it to you guys because I could have shown you every district. The, I feel, does address a lot of the issues of that need to be fixed with regards to Greenway. For example, in my ward, it does. Have an outline saying, hey, this area needs to be preserved for um green space in connection with uh. Uh, another Greenway Avenue, uh, the uh Fort Campbell Boulevard, we need to reinvest into that to fix it up. Like it, it's a guide ultimately. It's not what it is right now. Uh, it's made so that we, the elected officials in the city can look at it, have a plan and then. Come up with resolutions, say, hey, we need a park in this area. The plan says we need a park, therefore we need to make a park. That's, that's. When, how we use the plan ultimately. And I think it does address those avenues. We just need people to make that happen. Uh, at the back of the book, it does give you uh suggestions on pretty much low hanging fruit. Things that we can do to fix that around the city that will take a couple of weeks, a couple of months, that will cost the least all the way to uh. Taking a couple of years that would cost the most. And then we, it's pretty much a checklist. Let's just start knocking those out and fixing the city that way. With regards to transportation, I've looked into that. It's a very difficult thing to dive into just because. The way that funding is allocated, twenty-five percent comes from the city. Um, another twenty-five is from the state and set, uh, fifty is federal. And they pretty much tell us what routes we have to do. Uh, one of our bus routes services Kentucky. And we have to because we get that funding and they tell us that's part of your jurisdiction as well. And it, again, it's, it's difficult. Uh, I, we get funding based on ridership also, so more people ride. The more funding Clarksville can get to therefore add more buses. Uh, I think that we need to upgrade the method in which we choose uh the routes. I don't think it's very scientific. I've sat down and spoken to them about it and it just seems like it falls on deaf ears. So at this point, I would say to the residents, get people in. Who have the same vision of fixing the transportation because it just doesn't seem like. We have enough people right now to do that. Uh. And yeah, I I just think we need to be more efficient.
Thank you, Ms. Markie. And Mr. Jameson?
It's a hundred and ninety-two pages of a lot of reading. It looks good on the paper, but it's a lot of reading. Uh, me, myself, we drove by a home, kids were sitting outside playing. I get really much with coming kids, but I have some and they can't play. There's no trees. Kids go outside for five minutes, go back in the house. It's not fun anymore. There's no shade, there's no, there's nothing. Um, the yards are built like five by eight. There's no room for the kids to play, even if they wanna sit outside and like. But there's no shade from, if you go to these new parks, there's no sh- uh shade trees, there are metal, metal uh pavilions. You sit up under a metal pavilion, there's no cover from anything, protecting the kids from anything dealing with the sun or even being comfortable. As far as transit, it took us thirty minutes to get Austin P. from our home in Ward eight and it was miserable. I, my friend, I got here two minutes in time to come into a meeting greet, but it's horrible with the transit, but you have to drive to get what you need to. So if you're on a bus, I don't think the transit system with how large we've gotten in our city would be efficient for someone to get on a bus and make it to anywhere. And you can't get there in a car. But if we are gonna be, have to utilize the buses, I would love for them to go to a hybrid bus maybe. Do hybrid busing, um, but even with that, getting on a bus is still like getting in your car and driving two minutes to Walmart and take you thirty minutes to get there. So I would say with this plan, they can, we keep planning for the, for the future. But right now, the present, and this is horrible right now, we need to get a plan that faces things right now and it's in further growth with all these builders building. They need to build something for the ecosystem and some for, you know, safe spaces and for us to be able to go somewhere. If they're gonna co- build up all these uh uh apartments, have somewhere safe for, go and enjoy the green space.
And our final question. Cartel has abundant expertise in its academic, military, nonprofit and business sectors. That could assist local, could assist local government officials in implementing sustainable practices. To improve the quality of life for its residents. How would you utilize these resources to help the city and its residents move forward? And start out with Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jackson, sir.
You're fine. Um, Clarksville has a, a wealth of talent. We have, like you mentioned, from Austin P. to Fort Campbell, um, these resources and this talent. We need to tap into and focus on and become uh real partners with them. On collaborating with some of these issues to implement sustainable practices. Um, partner with ASP. ASPU can help develop, you know, and test these energy efficient technologies that um everyone keeps talking about. While the military experts could also help with the logistic um solutions that are needed. Thinking outside the box to address some of these issues. Um, we also um should be more involved with um some of our nonprofits that are out there doing the work. But they don't have enough people to help them implement at a speed or at a rate where we can see the difference. So I would um support and and advocate to utilize those resources, those partnerships that are around us. So that we could be better equipped in um going forward in meeting these needs. So um, once elected, those are some things that I would look into and how to address and utilize what we already have. To its max capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Billen?
Thank you. I'd like to say thanks to everybody for coming today and I appreciate your time and your patience. For a bunch of years, I worked at Fort Campbell and the last couple of years, I managed the plan section of the Garrison. Our staff would meet with representatives from military police, military intelligence, the airfield. Combat units, hospitals, infectious, infectious disease wards, when we have members, post engineers, information technology, even public affairs. And then we would invite people from FEMA, from uh county, state and uh city lay agencies. Everybody would bring their expertise to bear and we would have a, a plan to accomplish something. Usually it would be an exercise in case of uh some type of emergency. And there would be what they call in progress reviews. We go through the, the stuff to make sure that we're meeting our milestones. And uh, we then we could conduct a tabletop exercise and then to have a mock disaster and then have an after action review. We decide, decide what went right and what we need to improve. Some exercise that needs practice for a major earthquake or a terrorist organization uh getting the installation. That never happened and I pray that it never will. But ultimately, we need a plan for the future or we can recover from the disaster. But ultimately, we need a plan for the future or we can recover from the disaster. I've had years of experience participating in multi-agency plans and doing the work to coordinate, collaborate, and achieve a specific plan. The beauty of this initiative is that everyone benefits from the effort, and everybody brings to bear their own special skills. Let's invite Fort Campbell, national. They've already got their plan. Uh, APSU, state and federal agencies. Uh, and then take our, uh, Sustainability Board with a director. You've got to have somebody in charge that's got the vision. Uh, and then let's see, by having the brightest minds here at APSU get together and, uh, make our community greener, leaner, and less expensive. Most of the agencies have been involved in exercises and drills, so it's not like we're getting back to the deal. But like the wheel, we come, uh, back to full circle. And while the city and state can both advocate and sponsor the, uh, Sustainability Office, we need a Sustainability Office. So when I'm elected to Ward Twelve, I'll use the skills and experience to make this one of my priorities. Thank you much.
Thank you. Mr. Billups?
Sorry. Uh, I think that, uh, we have a wealth of experts here. Obviously, Austin P. State University, uh, Fort Campbell. There's members here sitting there, members of, uh, uh, nonprofit organizations, um, who could definitely, you know, assist in this sort of thing. Um, the thing is, is, uh, you know, we, we could create a committee, if you would. I think we already have one, Sustainability Committee. Uh, but I think there's vacancies on it, right? Yeah, so we could put people who are maybe, you know, from Austin P. on there, like scientists, and then maybe members, uh, uh, nonprofit members on there too, to be beneficial.
Everybody wants to build a board, but build a board for people on there who wants to be on there to do what they need to do, get, get, stand on board. So I figure you get some like-minded people who have the same, uh, ideas and listen to everybody's idea. And put them all together and then get a, a platform for something to, to go in advance and do what we need to do to get things done instead of keep talking about it. Coalesce, talk about it, meetings, talk about it, and not get done. Let's get some people together, get stuff done.
As far as utilizing resources, that's something that I always do. I always find somebody who is the expert, who knows better and can explain it to me. Uh, when it comes to, like, uh, the homes, for example, and the engineers, I've gone to engineers here in town, and they've been surprised because nobody has ever sat down with them and asked them, how is this gonna work? There's a sinkhole here. How do you fix that that you believe that this house is safe? Like, explain this logic to me. And it, they were surprised that somebody from council came up and asked them that. And I think that is, um, telling that previous people have never sought expert advice in that manner. And I think that it's something that we all need to do, uh, once you're, uh, are the city essentially, because obviously you're making these decisions that you don't have the field experience for. You, you know, you can be the mayor, you can be the city council, but I didn't study, you know, uh, specifically with all the sustainability topics. I didn't study how to build a home that's fuel-efficient or energy-efficient. I didn't know, I don't know how to fill in the sinkhole, so I need to, somebody to come and explain it to me, and I think that's what we need to do. Is when these topics come up, find the experts, because if you know there's a problem, and figure out how to fix that problem with the help of the experts. We have a lot of people here in town, uh, again, ASPs, yeah, APSU, we have the county extension office, we have the military base. They're meant to be self-sustaining mini-cities. They have a lot of knowledge as well. So it's just gathering those who have the experience, put them together in a room, give them the problem, and figuring it out at the end of the day.
Mr. Billups?
So firstly, I do agree that we need to utilize APSU and their resources, uh, as the biggest academic institution here. They have the resources that we need to be able to bring the issues at hand to the forefront. We can also utilize our military in different ways, such as, uh, Mr. Billups said, uh, sorry, for emergency preparedness. Uh, it's very great that they do those councils and they do those meetings, but we need to bring those meetings here to Clarksville for our, our residents. Because if we don't know what the plan is, how are we supposed to be prepared for the plan? Uh, the tornado that lastly happened, it left a lot of residents homeless. It left, left a lot of citizens assisting these, uh, impacted homes because we didn't know the plan. So we do need to utilize the military and Fort Campbell in helping our plan become more solid and accessible to everyone, so we don't have to be in those positions again. APSU and their faculty, faculty members and students can also work with urban planning and strategizing how we can bring these emergency preparedness issues, uh, available for everyone. I also feel that nonprofit organizations are great resources. If we need volunteers, they are the main ones that we can go to because volunteers, like we all say, volunteers are doing something that they want to do, not that they are forced to do. So if they are out there helping this nonprofit organization, and we ask those nonprofit organizations to assist us, those volunteers are gonna be the first to help. I, myself, and my husband, own a nonprofit organization. And although we aren't focused on what to bring to the city because we focused on LGBTQ, you, we are still a nonprofit organization that would jump at the opportunity to help the city in any way possible. So although some of these nonprofit organizations may seem that they aren't geared towards what we are looking for, that doesn't exclude them. So we should use all resources available to help every resident here in Clarksville feel safe and prepare for any emergencies, any development, and any sort of growth. Thank you.
And thank you. And Dr. Childs?
So I really, I really don't have a lot to say because they said it all. I'm just gonna take everything Housewoman Markie's just said, bring it on down here and say the exact same thing. But, you know, so what, the main thing we need is we need someone who's smart on the subject. Necessarily, you know, I must say, smart people, smart on the subject. So we have to hire, we have to have a sustained really direct to, to, um, help guide even the people in these nonprofits, the, um, Fort Campbell, APSU, who do we want, who do we need, and how are we going to get this done? So we can't do it with just people that, oh, I'll be on it, I'll be on it, I'll be on it, I'll be on the board, I'll be on the board. Just because you want to be on the board and have your name, you know, online somewhere. We need people that are smart about it, that know something about sustainability, that know something about the three hundred and sixty-nine billion dollars that we got none of for clean energy. We need to, we need, sorry, we just, we need people to know where, that this money is out there, and then we need a little piece of that pie. We got none of that money. That could have been a resource that we could have used. Thank you.
Thank you all. Concludes the questions. We've got a little bit of time. Uh, the state candidates will be here answering questions at six o'clock. So I encourage you and your public to maybe get together for a few minutes here and get to know each other a little more and find out what pressing questions they might have for you as well. But again, thank you so much for being here with us today.